2013, this is the Trade Commerce Tourism Committee Special Meeting, and we also thank you all. I'm with Joe Buscaino, Councilman of the 15th District, and Councilmember Mike Bonin, Councilman of the 11th District. Madam C.L.A., how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm okay. We're ready to roll?
Okay, yes.
All right. Let's take the airport people first, because they've got to get back and do some things. Airport, let's call the airport item first.
Under Item 5, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for council approval a contract with Otis Elevator Company to maintain approximately 90 elevators, escalators, and moving walkways in the Bradley West Terminal at LAX. The contract would have a term of five years with one renewal option for an additional five years, and the contract amount would not exceed $7.6 million during the first five-year period. The CAO also has submitted a report and recommendation.
Mr. CAO.
Good morning, members of the committee. Bill Kreitch with the CAO's office. We have reviewed this item, this request by the airports, and we recommend approval, primarily for these four reasons. By authorizing this contract, it allows us to properly maintain extended warranties on 90 escalators, elevators, and moving walkways at LAX. It ensures the knowledge transfer and the expertise to their own staff for future maintenance. It also reduces the potential for additional costs that could be incurred if an outside vendor who's not familiar with this type of equipment were to be hired in lieu of Otis Elevator. And it also allows the maintenance and repair of the equipment at a cost that reflects industry standards for this off-shift type of work. So for those reasons, we recommend approval.
Got it. You're okay?
James Shooter, Deputy Director for Facilities Engineering and Maintenance, I would add to that that the total that you see in the report includes $1 million for unexpected repair and unexpected maintenance. So it's $1 million less than the total for the preventive maintenance program.
Any questions? Any questions?
No questions.
How many elevators in the City of Los Angeles?
300. Oh, I'm sorry. In the city?
Yeah.
I don't know.
22,000-plus. I just learned that yesterday, and I think this is so important, because with ADA and all the movement of people, to have a good firm, to have a backup plan, to have that $1 million. Park La Brea is one of the pride of the 4th District, but they have an older system now. And what you said, Mr. CAO, Dave, the familiarity with the equipment is so key.
Yes.
So we'll send this forthwith to council, get this scheduled as soon as possible so we can move forward. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Approval. Everybody says approval. All right, we'll go back to item number one.
Sure. Under Item 1, the mayor submits for confirmation his appointment of Ms. Vilma Martinez to the Board of Harbor Commissioners for the term ending on June 30, 2016. The appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the mayor's removal of Commissioner Sung Wan Seon effective as of November 30, or at the time Dr. Seon's successor is confirmed by the council.
Great, and I think we could do 2-2, because
Sure, yes.
We have a rare opportunity.
Under Item 2.
You sit on this side there, young man. Okay? You've got to balance it out. If you sit on that side, it's like a ship. You don't know where you're going.
I'd like to see the 11.
Yeah, yeah.
Under Item 2, the mayor submits for confirmation his appointment of Mr. Edward Renwick to the Board of Harbor Commissioners for the term ending June 30, 2017. This is an appointment to fill the vacancy created by the mayor's removal of Commissioner Doug Kraus effective November 30, or at the time Mr. Kraus's successor is confirmed. And for both commissioners, the Ethics Commission has submitted its report, and they are before you.
And both have cleared Ethics Commission. Very good. I'm going to start with Mr. Buscaino, since he's
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had an opportunity to meet with both Ms. Martinez and Mr. Renwick just yesterday in the office, and we had a healthy discussion about the Port of Los Angeles and what an economic engine it is, not only to this region but to this country. And thoroughly enjoyed our conversation, not only about making the port more competitive, but also sharing my priorities in moving forward with waterfront redevelopment. I would pose a question. Tell us a little about yourself, your skills, your knowledge, your abilities in moving the port forward. Secondly, tell me a little about, you know, what you know about waterfront redevelopment, and share your thoughts on the importance of ensuring that the port not only is the international gateway for cargo, but also the international gateway for people as well.
Ladies first.
Thank you very much, Councilman, for that question and for that meeting yesterday. In terms of my skills, I've been a lawyer for over 40 years, and fortunately lawyers are trained to keep learning and ask more and more questions and do a lot of listening. And those skills came in very handy in my most recent assignment as U.S. Ambassador to Argentina, where I served for four years, a job I never expected to have, that I think I did, not being too immodest, discharged well. And I'm hoping that using that same set of skills, I will bring to the Harbor Commission and the concerns that you expressed to us yesterday, that same level of skill, dedication. I've been a resident of Councilman Labonte's district since, before he was councilman. I've been there since 1978. I've had occasion to visit the port, and I'm very excited about this opportunity. And I agree with you, Councilman, that this port is not only a tremendous engine for growth, for international trade, but for redevelopment in that area and throughout the state of California. We talked about tourism possibilities there. I don't know much about redevelopment, to tell you the truth, but I'm very good at learning, listening and learning.
Thank you, ma'am. I should have asked to go first, because she's a tough act to follow. It is a great honor for me to be here, and thank you so much. I've been, I grew up in Los Angeles, and I'm now a happy member of Councilman Bonin's district. I spent basically my whole life here, except for a few years at school. And it's a real opportunity for me, I think, to contribute back to the Los Angeles, which has been so kind and generous to me. So I'm very honored. Thank you. My background is predominantly in business, so I've spent time as a management consultant. I've spent time as an investment banker, and I've spent the last 13 years as an investor, primarily in logistics-oriented businesses. So I have a lot of background in logistics, very little in shipping and ports, per se. I think the skills I bring to bear is mostly a willingness to bring an open mind and sort of business analytics to a new industry. And I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to learn and also to contribute. I think I can bring some analytical capabilities. In terms of your other question, which is an excellent question, it strikes me that the purpose of the port is both to be, is really to be an economic engine for Southern California. And to do that well, it needs to balance the needs of a lot of different constituencies. And one very important constituency is its next-door neighbors.
All right. I appreciate that. Obviously, the mayor got it right once again, and we want to thank Mayor Garcetti for bringing forward two well-rounded commissioners, one who has an extensive international relation background, and also one who clearly has that business background that we need to ensure that not only we keep going with our relationships with countries around the world, but also making sure that we are competitive in light of what's happening with the Panama Canal. It seems like we're competing more with Long Beach than anyone else around the country these days. So, Mr. Chair, I fully support these two nominations from Mayor Garcetti, and that's that we move forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonin.
Nominating, the mayor's nomination of candidates from Tom's district and mine was probably not a bad move either.
Even better.
Thanks for your willingness to serve, both of you. Really appreciate it. You have one of the tougher assignments. You know, the Harbor Commission is one of the tougher ones in the city, and we've had an excellent Harbor Commission over the past few years. You've got some big shoes to fill. You know, I look at the harbor in many ways as I do the airport, which is in my district, and the way in which it's inextricably intertwined with the community. And Councilman Buscaino talked about waterfront development, and he talked about making sure that we work well with our neighbors. Part of the way that the port is an economic engine is that it employs so many of the people in San Pedro and Wilmington. One of the challenges we're going to face, and you'll hear us discuss it in a little bit, is automation, whether or not to automate, and what that means for the men and women who work there now. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on automation, and if we move forward on automation, how we make sure that we preserve jobs and protect the working men and women down there.
You know, that is something, Councilman, that I'm sure will be constantly on the agenda of not only the Harbor Commission, but many other commissions as well. And we will need to learn from the people who know what's what there before taking any positions. But I think, as Mr. Renwick pointed out, we will have to listen. We know we're in a very competitive environment. We want to win, right?
Yes.
So we have to balance this desire and need for competitiveness with automation. That could be a part of being competitive. We need to analyze what that means in real terms. I think it's very important to protect people. Whether we can protect each and every job remains to be seen, but it's important to find a way to protect people. So those are the touchstones that I would use, and I suspect Ed would too, in beginning to sort through these very thorny and very important issues.
I agree wholeheartedly with the ambassador's statement, and the only way, the only thing I would want to add is that while balancing the needs of competitiveness and promoting existing jobs, you also need to spend a lot of time and energy focusing on creating new jobs, and ideally better jobs. And I think that the port is in an unusually good position to do exactly that.
Thank you. Members, I'm just proud I've had a good office visits with both, and only had to ask a few questions, and got the spirit and commitment that these two individuals will make on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and it is a wonderful part of Los Angeles. There is transformation. I think I told you both the story, when we were kids, we'd all go down there just to watch, and you'd see the longshoremen working, and you'd see the big rope cargo going in and out. And now transformation with containerization and all these other issues that are there. But as one door opens, another door closes, and we've got to make sure that we try to keep those doors open for all. And the big thing I did mention, I think to you, Mr. Rennick, I think about our community colleges and the occupation centers, and always constantly learning and training, because it's a very adaptive world. So there'll be more change in the next five years, as there has been in the last 10 with technology and all our lives. So this is very good. I'm going to ask you to take your seats back there before we vote. We do have two public comment cards, Noel Weiss for both items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you.
On Item 1, and then on Item 2.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Appreciate it. I think we talk about protecting people, protecting jobs. I think we need to talk about Rancho Holdings, 25 million gallons of butane. The Port Commission has a special responsibility
We're talking about these appointees to the commission.
We are appointing about the appointees, Mr. Labonte. The Harbor Commission basically has jurisdiction on a couple of grounds here, and we're talking about a situation where you've got a rail spur, and you've got a railway that's owned by the harbor that's basically violating the Tideland Trust, because they're using that, they're renting it out. You've got a management issue with the harbor, and you have a potential explosive issue if, in fact, there's an accident. Now, nobody wants an accident, nobody wishes an accident, but if there is an accident, the risk is going to be borne by the people. We're socializing the risks here and privatizing the gains. We need, basically, this Harbor Commission and these commissioners to be aware of the issue, to hold some hearings, as the Harbor Commission can. They can subpoena. They can provide a Board of Commissioners under Section 217, so that this issue becomes one that is borne out before the public, so that we have a competent public discussion on whether, on who should bear the risk, and if there's a way to mitigate the risk. Does the port have insurance? Does the city have insurance? What is the situation, and what, basically, can the port do? Because they are managing this asset, Mr. Labonte and committee, they take rent from Rancho. That alone is going to put the port and the people of the City of L.A. and the harbor, potentially, in an exposed position. City Attorney can't give you competent legal advice, because they've got a conflict of interest between representing the port and the harbor, if there's a problem. We need, it's very important that these commissioners be aware. Janice Hahn has been out there. She basically cut off that export opportunity. This is an entity that basically overpaid for this property. I think they're trying to basically hold the city hostage, try to basically buy the land at an excessive price, and I think it's important that we begin to move forward and have an open, apparent discussion on this issue. And if we can't do it before the City Council, because the City Council doesn't want to do it, then we've got to, basically, have the Harbor Commission that has jurisdiction over the permit and over the railroad to, basically, try to control what's going on here. And I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment on that issue. Total unanimous vote for these commissioners.
Yes.
So we'll do that and forthwith to council. Could you put it on today?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we'll put it on today. See, that's where we get action. Good job. I like that. All right. Okay. Let's go.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item. Madam C.A.O.
Under Item 3, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for approval a permanent board order and the accompanying ordinance to amend the port regarding penalties for violations of the tariff, and specifically penalties or remedies for violations of the Clean Air Action Plan. And the CAO also has submitted a report and recommendation.
Okay, so we have a full team here, the CAO, the Harbor Department, and the City Attorney's Office. Who wants to start?
Commissioners, I'll just lead it off. Michael Christensen, Deputy Executive Director Development at the Port of Los Angeles. As you're probably aware, on June 13 of this last summer, there was a Supreme Court decision related to the Clean Truck Program.
Yeah.
That's been in the courts for quite a number of years. The action in front of you is an action designed to synchronize our tariff that governs our Clean Truck Program with that Supreme Court decision. And the City Attorney could give you specifics, and certainly the CAO can talk about the generalities as well.
If I go to the CAO, then you could tie it all together legally.
Yeah. Alvin Newman, CAO's office. We looked at the proposed tariff amendments as an administrative action to clarify and change the language in three of the tariff sections on the application of the construction regulations for the Clean Air Action Plan and the Clean Truck Program. So basically what the department has stated.
Very good.
Janice Sidley with the City Attorney's Office. Essentially, what has happened is we fought this case, and it is the Clean Truck Program, and the Supreme Court had struck down a few of the particular parts of the Clean Truck Program. What we're doing here is strictly amending the ordinance so that it complies with the outcome of the court case, and then we'll continue to implement the parts of the Clean Truck Program that remain.
Just an observation, I'll continue to make this clear, that the port has made some significant strides in reducing emissions at the Port of Los Angeles, so you're looking at reduction of NOx and SOx by over 80 percent. And even more so, now that I have a little bit more of an audience in AQMD, sitting on that AQMD board, we need to continue to acknowledge the fact that the port has continued to reduce emissions. Are we there yet? We can do better, absolutely. But I just want to commend the port, and I know this is an item in response to what's happened in the courts, but I want to just acknowledge and thank the port for making that continued commitment to improving our environment and doing so in front of our two newest commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin, no questions. I have one question, because both ports are side by side. How is Long Beach, because pollution knows no borders, how is Long Beach's effort, and is it similar to ours, and is there any impact?
The basics of the Long Beach effort are similar in that the pre-2007 trucks are a thing of the past. They've got about the same level of DPM, diesel particulate matter reductions, which, as Councilman Buscaino had mentioned, is about 90 percent on the trucks. And that's particularly important, since those trucks are the sources closest to a lot of the neighborhoods in the harbor area. So they're on, Councilman Labonte, they're basically on track with us.
And the wind usually blows to the west? How does the wind blow?
Prevailing wind is typically an ocean breeze coming off the ocean towards the
Towards into the inland. Very well. Madam City Attorney, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deputy Director, Mr. CAO. No other questions?
Move to
With vote approval. Thank you. Next item, Madam C.L.A.
Under Item 4, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for approval the Second Amendment to the Permit with Trade PAC Incorporated. This permit is for the design, construction, and operation of a marine container terminal at berth 136 to 147 at the Port of Los Angeles for a term of 30 years, ending in 2039. The proposed amendment would revise the various improvements that initially were envisioned in order to build an expanded automated terminal rather than an expanded conventional terminal. The CAO also has submitted a report and recommendation.
We're going to call on the CAO, but first I want to welcome the director, acting director
Interim.
Interim Director of the Port of Los Angeles, the great city in general of Los Angeles, Gary Lee Moore. Thank you, Gary, for being here. Gary, welcome. And we're going to start with the CAO.
Alvin Newman, CAO's office. The Second Amendment to Trade PAC Terminal Program is to modify and amend the Trade PAC's scope of work and budget. It's to redesign, develop, and construct automated container terminal facilities at port berths 136 and 147. Specifically, it's for new automatic container terminal equipment and operations, is to correct and make technical changes, and is also, as will be explained, it is to amend the budget by approximately $145.9 million to a total budget of $510. The department has secured grant funding that will offset that cost, and the total funding with the offset of the grant funding will be $450 million. The value of the lease over the 30-year period will be $2.26 billion.
Thank you very much. Good morning, councilmembers. Gary Moore, interim executive director. Thank you for hearing this item today, and you know how much I support the CAO. I just, I think the City Attorney would agree with me. The budget is not before you today. The item that's before you is the amendment to change from what we call a conventional terminal to now an automated terminal. So I just want to make that distinction there.
That is correct.
You know, in my one week with the port here, obviously, this has been the number-one item here, and it is a major item. And we come before you saying that it was an oversight and a mistake at the port not to bring this item before you earlier. And this item should have been before the council at an earlier time. We're bringing it before you today
Mr. Reference, what time? Should it have been six months ago? Should it have been?
Approximately, this issue in 2010 should have
2011.
11, I'm sorry. 2011 should have been brought before the council. I think the thing here, some of the lessons learned here is, obviously, one, it should have come before the council. But two, the cost increases and so forth, there's some things that, going forward, we can do a little differently, I believe, to help ensure the success. One of them is, whenever you take a leap into technology and so forth, I think it's always good to have some type of peer review, outside peer review of professionals, because sometimes you can't see from within. I think that's very important. Also, I think going forward is sharing in the lease agreement the potential of cost overruns. You know, looking at this, since both of us are sharing in the risk here, it motivates everybody to keep in check. And then, obviously, internally, we'll have to make changes to never let this happen again, where we bring something to you that's two years past when it should have come before you. So I'll turn it over to you for questions at this time.
I'm going to ask Mr. Buscaino, then I know Mr. Bonin has a lot of questions as well, and then I have some as well.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have some extensive questions. So I understand, Mr. Moore, that this is not a budgetary item before us. It's more of changing the type of use for Trade PAC. However, we need to address the numbers. When this project was approved by the council in 2009, it was then a $245 million project. Today, an increase of over $260 million. What happened between 2009 and now, where we're now over 260, an increase of over $260 million, which cost over $100, 100 percent of that? And what were the changes to the project's scope? What are the associated budget impacts, and who approved these changes?
Sure. I'll start out here, and then I'll turn it over to Mike Christensen, the Deputy Executive Director, to go in greater detail. This was the first time that an automated port had been done in the City of Los Angeles or along the western, the west coast of the United States. I believe at this time, there's only one in Norfolk, right? And so it is new technology, and obviously, there was underestimates to the challenge that goes into building such a thing. Also, when they got out there and they looked at things, for instance, soil conditions resulted in modifications to the concrete, I think about a $20 million investment in that. The electrical system, it was very much underestimated of what it would take to the electrical system, and there was about over a $50 million delta in that cost right there, some of the specifics. And construction sequencing, and Trade PAC was able to get additional businesses that they did not anticipate during the initial concept, which led to an increase in the phasing of the construction. And then there was underestimating of the cost of what it would take. And so, Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, maybe, Mike, Mr. Christensen, can you address the decision-making process of how these funds were even approved at this point? And were they approved and changed in scope of this project? Were there, was anyone made aware of the new technology and the changes? For me, it was, to me, it's unacceptable to make these decisions behind closed doors. I just want you to address that.
Yes, Councilman. As our interim executive director has mentioned, the project started out, when it came to you in 2009, as a $250 million project. That's 245 million of infrastructure and a $5 million EIR. That was based on very conceptual-level estimates that were brought forward for a conventional terminal. As we went through in 2009, as we went into 2010, the customer, Trade PAC, came to us and indicated they needed to have this converted to an electrified automated terminal. As we progressed design on that, on the basic terminal, and as we started to look at some very conceptual-level estimates for automation, the cost had risen by about $119 million. And as we saw that, we brought it to our commission as part of a budget baselining process, so that in 2012, April 2012, our commission approved a revised budget of $365 million. Now, this swept up all of the site issues that we had discovered as we were designing portions of the terminal. It also brought in what we thought at the time was the cost of automation. We thought there was about a $32 million delta on automation. So that brought us to a $365 million baseline budget. At that point, the automated portion was still conceptual, but we launched off into a full-blown design upon board approval of that modified budget.
And tell me about the type of cranes that are being used. These are automated stacking cranes that I understand that no one in the country is using, or what Mr. Moore just said, are there any west coast ports that are using these types of cranes? And how are these cranes going to benefit the production, the efficiencies of the port, specifically Trade PAC Terminal?
There are quite a number of different types of automation. The type that Trade PAC has settled on uses a couple kinds of automated cranes. The first, the crane that picks up the container once it's put on the wharf is a small, single container crane on rubber tires that picks it up, moves it to the stacks or the rows of containers to be stored and sorted. At that point, they're picked up by a large automatic stacking crane, an ASC, and that's a rail-mounted, a very large piece of rail-mounted equipment. So the two types of cranes will be used on the Trade PAC facility. Different terminals throughout the world, and we did, as we launched into this, we benchmarked not only the Norfolk terminal to try to understand it better, but we also benchmarked some terminals in Europe, particularly in the Port of Hamburg, that you were utilizing the same equipment manufacturer. And they all have variances, they all are a little different. But the TRAPAC terminal relies on those two basic pieces of equipment.
Okay.
I was mentioning, once we benchmarked this terminal at the $365 million level, we got into design in earnest. That would have been over the summer and fall of 2012. And as we were doing that detailed design, we found quite a number of errors in our estimate that drove $365 million.
Let me speak for my colleagues. We should not be blindsided by these figures, and the Port Commission should not be blindsided by these increasing costs. I get the importance of efficiencies, be more competitive, making cargo come in and out, and I don't know who to blame, but these decisions need to be clear, and especially if we're increasing a cost of over $260 million. What do you say to that, Mike?
I agree. We had a bad estimate going into that $365 million cost estimate. When we discovered that in the early part of 2013, we surfaced that to our commission. There was obviously a lot of concern, a lot of sticker shock on that level of price increase. We looked at ways we could cut down on the scope, we looked at every, we turned over every rock we could. We did find some savings, but obviously, it wasn't enough to offset this cost.
When we talk about waterfront redevelopment, which would be another major economic boost to the region, how do these increased costs in the project affect the port spends on other projects, specifically the waterfront redevelopment? And how are these project-ranking decisions made?
In terms of the waterfront and all the other projects, we have an exercise we go through. We've involved our commission in this, where we prioritize all the projects, we look at what affordability is across all of our capital program, including waterfront. We rank those, and we put those in a 10-year long-range plan, which adjusts according to the economy, it adjusts according to revenue. At this point, our waterfront remains funded, and we intend to keep the waterfront funded.
Very good. Where are we at with the project right now, today as we speak?
I'm sorry?
Where are we at with the project right now, as of today?
As of right now, today, the TRAPAC project program, which is comprised of 10 projects, is on schedule. Our Board of Harbor Commissioners approved the revised budget in September. The revised budget of the program is $510 million. We are tracking on or slightly below that budget right now. Every construction project that's out there is on schedule and on budget.
And according to the CAO report, we're looking at over a period of 30 years of return of 8.75%. Does that take into account the federal grant of approximately $60 million?
It does. The 8.7 does take into account the.
So we are getting a return on investment over a period of 30 years?
That's correct. And they are state grants under Prop 1B.
And there's some timeline on, this is a time-sensitive issue, specifically on the grants?
Yes. My understanding is that we would need to obtain Council approval by this Friday not to put in jeopardy of the $60 million of grant funding.
And Gary, I know you mentioned, I know you just began as an interim, but what, can you tell us a little bit about how you're managing the significant capital projects as, based on your experience as city engineer, and like the Elliott River, the Sixth Street Bridge, your experience in managing these big projects, how do you avoid these kinds of things from happening in the future?
I think it's always important. One thing I want to add, and then I'll answer your question, is there is an after-action report being prepared. I look forward to reviewing that when it's completed and looking for specific recommendations. In general, though, my management style is to have robust systems that don't change when pushed or poked, meaning that you get the same data, and everybody can get the same information. It's available internally, it's available externally. Looking at and managing systems and people that, you know, there, nobody can increase a budget or increase a scope without coming through a robust approval process. And I think communication improvement within the Department obviously needs to be improved because this happened.
Is there a project manager specifically addressing these concerns at TRAPAC from the port that the port has designated?
Councilman, we do have a project manager. She has been on this project for quite a while, and she continues to deliver on both the design and monitor the construction.
And moving forward for waterfront redevelopment, we need to have a project manager for waterfront redevelopment, so we're not, I mean, obviously, this is definitely a lesson on what not to do, and how not to move things forward in the port. But even though, colleagues, I'm inclined to support this, and the fact that we have to move forward on, you know, waterfront and cargo, waterfront, cargo efficiencies, especially with CAO's report of an 8.75 rate of return, it's still a decent investment. But, and I know that the port every few years does these, a number of industrial audits of its operations, I'd just like to make sure the consultant looks at the overall process for these large-scale capital projects. So, and Gary, you're committed to looking at this and ensuring that we don't make this, the port doesn't make the same errors moving forward?
Absolutely. As you know, the people who work in the port are extremely dedicated, and nobody wants this type of situation. Nobody wants to have this happen again, and I'm committed to doing everything I can to never.
Sir, do me a favor. In 90 days, give me a report back on what specific procedural changes that would be made to rectify this problem and ensure that this doesn't happen again.
Absolutely, sir.
Mr. Bonner.
Thank you. Gary, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You've got your work cut out for you, because this situation, I think, is pretty much a hot, stinking mess. I think it speaks to budget implications. I think it has serious governance questions, and, I mean, it speaks to the philosophy of how this port is going to be competitive. There's so much about this that's disturbing, and Mr. Buscagino asked a lot of questions about this. We talked about, you and Mike talked about how the costs increased on this project. And I assume some of those cost overruns were because of errors on our part, the port, the city of Los Angeles. Is that correct?
Errors in estimates, yes.
Yes. Some of those cost overruns are also due to either errors on the part of, or decisions on the part of, or choices made by TRAPAC. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
The choice of electrical system they used, the fact that they brought in additional business, which impacts the phasing of the construction, those are costs that are, that have gone up because of choices that TRAPAC has made, right?
Choices, yes, correct.
Okay. So how much of the additional cost overrun? That's a burden that is a shared burden. So is there a shared responsibility for that? When the costs went up, did we go back and get additional concessions from TRAPAC?
I'll let Catherine answer in detail, but I will say that last week, one of the things I had the opportunity to do was go to Tokyo and meet with TRAPAC in Tokyo and talk to them about beginning negotiations on an amendment. And they have agreed to start negotiations regarding an amendment. And that is important to all of us, because to be able to do an amendment, obviously, will guarantee additional revenue, which will help offset this additional cost that the city is making on this project.
But if we approve this today, what leverage do we have in getting any concessions from them in the amendment process?
Well, and once again, there is an opening in the contract in five years. Catherine can go into.
So in addition to the rate of return.
For the record, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Catherine McDermott, Deputy Executive Director. In addition to the return that was calculated by the port and the CAO, the contract provides that every five years under the charter, the compensation is renegotiated. So what wasn't taken into account in that analysis is our ability to take into account every five years our investment and seek to change the rates to achieve a return on those. Now, we'll always balance the rate of return with competitiveness, so we don't want to price TRAPAC up here and everyone else down here, but we can, every five years, go back and look to see that if we need to look at the rates and make our rate of return more competitive.
But by that point, we're five-plus years into giving TRAPAC what they wanted in terms of the modernization and the automation that they sought. So we don't have a hell of a lot of leverage.
We don't have a lot of leverage between now and the first reset period.
Part of the reason I think the governance questions are so important here is not just because this is a matter of respect, respect for the commission and the Council, and particularly for Mr. Buscagino, but this is also a question of what input you may have gotten in the process from Mr. Buscagino, or from the Harbor Commission, or from this Council. I would imagine that at some point in this process, if this had been brought to us in a timely fashion, someone might have said, "Well, if this is what's happening, why aren't we extending TRAPAC's lease by 10 or 15 years?"
And I'm going to take responsibility, the oversight in not processing the amendment earlier was mine. The discussions with TRAPAC over both the description of the improvements board that were being built, the cost of those improvements, and the environmental review process were really dynamic and happened over a period of months. When that, when those issues were clarified, that amendment should have been processed, and that was an oversight, and I'm here to say that I'm asking you to approve the Second Amendment, acknowledging that we've made mistakes, and we have to make sure they don't happen again.
What's troubling, though, is that not only could we have encouraged negotiations that would have gotten a better deal for the city with TRAPAC in terms of the length of the lease or the money we're getting in, but we probably also could have asked port staff to negotiate with TRAPAC to make sure that ILWU jobs that may be lost as a result of automation, there'll be guarantees that folks who are currently working there will get trained and employed with the new technology jobs. No need to reply, I guess.
Comment?
Question. You've said, when you met with me yesterday and today, that this needs to be approved by Friday. I understand from the CAO documents and from the Council agenda that we have until December 6th on this item.
Commissioners, or Councilman, we have a deadline under the Prop 1B program to have contracts awarded by the 10th of December, meaning that our commission has to award the construction contracts that are being funded by that date.
So if we didn't act by Friday, the commission would just need to have a special meeting?
Would be required to have a special Board of Harbor Commissioners meeting, yes.
Right, okay. I think that's an important distinction to be made. One more question. One of the, the question really before us today is automation, and whether or not we go forward on automation. And I think there's very compelling arguments for it. I think we will hear at Council some objections from ILWU about it, which is reasonable from their standpoint. This is the first terminal on the west coast, the first one that we have that is being The fact that the commission wasn't brought in earlier tells me that at no point has there been a global discussion and a policy decision that automation is the way that we want to be going, and that we want to be automating all of our ports in the future. It tells me that at no point was there a discussion about, in the battle for competitiveness, which is our chief goal here, to make sure this port is competitive, that we determined that automation is the best way to spend the dollars that we can spend on competitiveness. I mean, I imagine there's other ways that we could have done that as well, and the policymakers were denied the opportunity to do that. At what point are you going to ask the commission and the Council to weigh in on whether or not, beyond this specific item, automation is the way to go, or what the competitiveness expenditure strategy is?
Mike, you may want to address, the Harbor Commission, I believe, in 2011 was aware of automation. You are correct, though, this did not come before the Council until today.
That is correct. Councilman Bonner, the Harbor Commission did see quite a number of actions involving automation, and there were discussions among the commission on automation, particularly in 2012, but Gary is correct that it did not come to Council, and that was an error, and it was an error in governance. It should have come to Council with that.
So is it port policy that we're going to now automate every terminal as we go through lease agreements?
I'd say that we're having discussions with different customers on automation, and this is a subject that, to be honest, at this point, the customers are very wary, because it's a huge expenditure on their part in terms of equipment. I think that Mr. Pizzano and TRAPAC have said that their own investment in equipment is about $180 million. So we are also wary, because it's an enormous investment on our part. So we're kind of at the crossroads of the future. We think, we know we're going to have to achieve efficiencies in the way cargo is moved, but we don't quite know yet how automation and when automation will become the norm. So we're going to have to look at it on a terminal-by-terminal basis, but I think your point is really well-taken, that maybe this discussion is bigger, the question of automation is bigger than looking terminal-by-termal and looking at it holistically.
And has the port examined how many existing ILWU jobs might be lost as a result of automation?
How about specifically to this project?
Has the port or TRAPAC agreed to a job training program, or any placement programs for employees who may be displaced?
I think you'd have to ask Mr. Pizzano. He can answer that.
He filled out a card. He'll be called.
The port hasn't, then, right?
The port doesn't have a direct relationship with labor. We would certainly, and we have talked about with labor, working with them to identify what types of training opportunities and how we can help, but we don't have a direct contract with labor.
Which is the process, let me just ask a couple of questions, yeah, to follow up on that. You're the Port of Los Angeles right there. Move your paper out of there. Move all your paper, Gary, move it out of there. That's the land that you own, that the city owns. You're the port right there. And basically, you're leasing that space to someone who's a shipper.
Right.
Okay? And when we talk about automation, all we've been pounded on in the last 20 years is technology. And technology is, automation falls in that, which is a challenge. If you go back to, you look at the films that they used to make about Detroit, you know, and the industrialization of the United States, and workers, and the number of workers, and everybody going out that same door at 10 after 5, and the whistle, and et cetera. It's all transformed. Even my early remarks, as a child going to San Pedro, you would see the cargo. There were a big net, there were big people, they lived in San Pedro. So transformation is our challenge. What our challenge is right now is, has there ever been anything this big before in, that we know, in the Port of Los Angeles of an era? You know, I know you had Pier 400, which was a very big project. Do you recall, and I know not all of you are veteran, as far as longtime of service, but this is a tremendous audible, if I could say, using a football term. But to win, we call to call this audible, that's what I want to say, but whatever winning is.
And Councilmember, the, and certainly in my tenure at the port, it was, this is the largest.
But give us, was there another one, which was 50 million, or 25 million, or 10 million, or?
Well, one of the largest programs, Pier 400, was delivered on budget and on time.
On budget, on time. And those people, that's some years ago with Mr. Bradley's term, because I know there's a lot of push over Mr. Virago's term to transform the port and be attentive to the people who pay the freight from the side of the customers, which I've heard of. Question I did want to ask to, when we, on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 means it's built, okay, where are we from 1 to 10?
We're about 7 right now.
We're about 7, so we're deep into it on this issue here. And also, on the audits, how often do you do audits?
We have an in-house audit group that does annual audits on multiple audits.
Does the controller's office pop in, or do they just wait till everything's done? How does that go? Because should there be, this is a question. How does that go? Because should there be, this is a question for committee members, something of a billion-dollar project, should there be constant oversight by the city Controller's Office? I just thought, because I don't, you don't like this, we don't like this, you don't like this, but also, an audit or an oversight, and you mentioned oversight, it's like an official in a football game, you know? You don't want to hold, maybe a hold, but at least they keep the game, you know, fair.
I guess, councilmember, I would ask, as Councilman Buscagno requests, coming back in 90 days, I'd like to have the opportunity to work with the new commission. I'd like to have the opportunity to look at it in detail and come back to you with the best recommendations.
With a plan. And I did like what you said about outside peer review, because I know personally, the largest public works project we had was the Metro rail, which stopped. And Dr. Eisen thought, forgive me for mispronouncing his name, from the University of British Columbia, was the expert. And it was stop, 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 stop. And then Roger Snoble said, "Let's do a peer review," which helped us get Congress to approve it. And peer reviews are extremely important, as you mentioned. So, these are some tough questions. I would like to get the city attorney on record, just to come up in voice. I do have some comment cards, if we could here. Members, I'm inclined to move this forward Friday, because with holidays and other activities, to try to get this done and squared away is real important.
Today, actually.
It's on council. Okay. I'm getting better service than I usually get around here, which is good. Okay. Madam City Attorney, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Give us your view, because you have good skills and have the city's interest, please.
Again, my name is Jana Sidley. I'm the General Counsel for the Port of Los Angeles. I believe that the item before you is to approve the Second Amendment and to go back and ratify the actions that have been taken to date, so that the documentation matches the actions that are being taken by the Harbor Department at this point. The actions before you have been vetted and are fully legal before you.
Thank you very much. I do have some public comment cards.
Mr. Chair, could I just add to the city attorney's comments? What she is also saying is, this is a slight change in what is written in the board transmittals, in the recommended actions for council, that transmittal mentions approval of the revised budget, which the board did and has authority to do. So, we would remove any references to approval of the revised budget for the project. And we would also add a recommendation to ratify the previous actions that have been taken by the director and the board. This includes the appropriations and expenditure of funds, contract solicitation and award, use of grant funding, and various other things.
Thank you. So, you understand that?
It is correct. The Harbor Department has control over the harbor revenue funds, and so those stand-
Not the City Council of Los Angeles.
No, I'm sorry.
Very good. Thank you. If I could ask you to vacate your seats?
Thank you.
Chris Vera Montes, please, followed by Frank Pizano.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Chris Vera Montes, and I'm the president of the ILW Local 13. And first, let me start by saying thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you guys. And also, I'd like to applaud some of the things you guys said here, the statements, from Councilman Bonn and Councilman Buscagno, about the concerns about the ILW and the workforce down there. What I can state to you here is that I have a lot of grave concerns with the TRAPAC issues going on right now. But I want to make very clear here, I'm not here to say it's a project that needs to be stopped. I'm not here to say it's a project that needs to be completely abandoned and be done, and the capital expenditures that were spent are lost. I'm not here to do that. What I'm here to talk about is the fact that there is many jobs going to be lost as a fact of automation. And, you know, I know when that number came up, people were kind of paused and staggered, but I can tell you, it's roughly 70% of our workforce. That's a staggering number, when we employ approximately 7,000 people in the ports of L.A. and Long Beach. So, what does that come down to? It comes down to the part where TRAPAC, what we'd like to see is some complacency, or at least the fact that you sit down, talk to us about the future of these things. And I'm going to give you a couple of examples. Just recently, we had an L R C, and we requested three weeks ago, about two to three weeks ago, what type of equipment are you having coming? What type of procedures are you going to have there, so that we could start now working with them on what type of workforce could be trained and that type of equipment? Any new types of jobs that are going to be created, since we're going to lose so many, that they be the work of the ILW and train us, or let us, if we have to the point, if it's that critical to us, we'll seek training if we have to on our own. But the jobs there are created. My personal opinion is that TRAPAC has a moral and ethical responsibility to the communities of the San Pedro, Wilmington, Long Beach area, where many of our employees work. We work in those areas. Again, I'm not asking to thwart this job. I think it needs to be done. But I also have to question the future of the ports for not just TRAPAC, but is automation the way we want to go? I mean, is it the future of what we want down there, where we just place workers? What would happen to our housing industry? What would happen to the local economies there that our people support gravely? You know, that's major concerns for us, in addition to the loss of work. Right now, we're continually on an annual basis, losing work, losing work, losing work. Our membership is not growing. It's being reduced by, in the last couple of years, we've lost 1,300 members out of the ILW due to, really, retirement, things like that, transfers. So, what I really want here to be stressed on the record is that, as the committee, that you guys really, when you look forward to processing future automation projects, that we look at the future of what's going to happen, the type of jobs that are going to be displaced, and the members that go with it, that support the economies.
Thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate it. We gave you some extra time, because you were touching a lot of bases that are very important. Mr. Pizano?
You guys know each other? Yeah.
All right. Shake hands first. So, we want to see some love there. Okay.
Actually, when I started on the waterfront, and I was an immigrant, just like Councilman Buscagno, my father came here to fish in San Pedro. I'm born and raised in San Pedro. I started longshoring when I was in high school.
What high school you go to?
San Pedro High School.
Okay.
And went to Long Beach State. And during that time, longshoring and fishing was my source of income, and the Port of L.A. was dependent upon, I mean, many of the immigrants in San Pedro and Wilmington were here because of the port, either fishing, shipyards, canneries. And the port had made the community, and the port still makes the community. We continue to payroll longshoremen at the point of 1.2 million a week. Some of the construction overrides are because we're still employing longshoremen. We try to do business around their construction. That's a cost override for the port, and also a cost override for ourselves. But automation had to come in, because the ships were getting bigger. And for the safety of the longshoremen, we had rubber-tire gantry cranes, the ones that Mike talked to you about, running up and down runs. When you have thousands of containers and thousands of trucks running up and down these runs, the safety of the longshoremen and the truckers became critical. At the same time, CARB came in with their new requirements. That meant that all the transponders that we had bought in the year 2000 were obsolete, needed to be replaced. So, we're meeting CARB requirements. We're sitting there saying, "Okay, what do we do?" We have to electrify the ships, right? Now, we've got to electrify the equipment, because we have diesel-powered equipment out there. So, to meet the CARB requirements, we said, "What are we going to do? Go back to the diesel, or are we going to electrify?" The port's electrifying the vessels. We need to do the same with the cranes. The ships are getting bigger, 8,000, 10,000 T U ships. This means that a ship in a conventional style would sit seven days in order to complete the cargo transaction. That's not competitive in this environment. Electrified, what we did is, the automation is only between the ship and the stacking cranes. The longshoremen still needed to unlash the ships. You still need longshoremen to unplug the reefer units on the ships. 70% reduction? I don't think so. I would say that I went to school with half of the longshoremen. I think Chris will tell you that. I know all the longshoremen. I know what happens to them when those jobs go away. I went to school with them. I know what saved them was the waterfront. It's just we've got to change the way we work.
Yeah.
We've got to be able to handle bigger ships, larger ships, more safely, cleaner. And that's what technology is going to bring us. We had OCR cameras come in at the gates in 2003, 2004. The clerks thought that would eliminate jobs. There's more clerks now than ever. When I longshored, there was 2,200 longshoremen on the waterfront. How much did Chris tell you they have now? 7,000 plus. Foremen have gone up to 350, 400. Clerks have gone from 600 up to 1,200. The waterfront has more than doubled the manpower. That's because we're handling more cargo. We need to maintain that business. I started TRAPAC. I'm going to finish at TRAPAC.
Well, thank you for your comments on that. Mr. Buscagno had one question. I want to call the port.
It's great to see you both at the table, and this is how it should be. Listen, automation is coming. We just need to train our workforce. Frank, when you see Chris, you're talking to our friends and family, right? And Chris, when you see Frank, it's because of Frank that's keeping these jobs in place. But we need to make sure we communicate that within the family. It's clear that these jobs are being threatened, and for us at his home, right, Frank?
Right.
And I'm shocked to hear that, at times, TRAPAC is not bringing labor to the table. And I need you to respond to that, as far as, you know, when the equipment is unloaded, we need to make sure that our longshoremen are taking care of the equipment, are putting it together. And if they're not trained, TRAPAC needs to be committed to training our workforce. If you look at what we'll be approving soon, is a $510 million project, the least TRAPAC can do is train our workforce.
I think you heard them say, "We're spending $180 million worth of equipment." Do you think Frank goes out there and repairs that equipment? No. ILW mechanics, ILW workforce. So, we sent four of our lead men through our subcontractor to London, where they were erecting and working on the assembly of new cranes. They come back and train our steady workforce. Now, the issue becomes more of, how do you train the other 7,000?
I got it. This is a public comment. There's just some questions. Mr. Bonn has a question, but I think this has been a good item, after your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to sort of follow up on Mr. Buscagno's point. You know, I don't know whether it was a sin of omission or a sin of commission that denied the commission and the council the opportunity to weigh in on this earlier. We'll figure that out eventually. But as I indicated earlier, had the council and the commission weighed in, I think they probably would have instructed port staff to try to negotiate differently with you, sir. I think they would have tried to get more burden sharing on the costs, and I think they would have tried to get more commitments to protect the workers. I know Mr. Buscagno would have. I mean, he is fiercely determined to stand up for his workers and for the competitiveness of the port. So, we were denied that opportunity earlier. I just want to ask you now, since this is our only opportunity, are there any commitments you can make to us about job training, about reemployment of people in different jobs? I know you'll sit down and talk, but I want to know if there's any commitments you can make.
We've already committed to our steady workforce, to be trained on, you have to remember, we have a casual workforce and a steady workforce. So, the workforce that we have are crane drivers that are now working inside offices, moving the last six inches. Those are being trained by TRAPAC. Chris is going to get our simulators, first week in December, that we brought in from vendors at our cost, to go in. And PMA does the majority of the 7,000 other employees that are employed in San Pedro or Wilmington.
Frank, I'd like to be included in that simulator training. Let me know.
Going to be in Chris's offices, so you're going to be close to it. They'll be right in his offices. So, we have worked on that, and we're also working with PMA to set up more training as a whole. And that's tough for Chris's side, because everybody wants to sign up for this training. You know, they all want to be crane mechanics. They all want to be reefer mechanics. That's a burden on Chris's side.
Mr. Buscagno, would it be okay with you if I also asked, in addition to the 90-day report you're doing, for the port to prepare for the commission and the council, a study on the impacts of automation, what the trade-offs are on the port, the workforce, and the community, and what requirements can be put in in the future in order to make commitments to job training?
Glad to accept that, absolutely.
I think it also would be useful in that to do a bit of a cost-benefit analysis about what the best ways are to spend money on making the port competitive.
Right. And automation's coming. We just need to be on the forefront of it.
Okay. One last thing. I want to say, Gary, I want you to take your seat over here again, real quick. And Madam City Attorney, take your seat over there, just so everybody's at the table here. The one thing I mentioned earlier, when I think Mr. Rednick was up there about Harbor College and the Harbor Occupation Center and all these institutions, when Mr. Bonn asked some questions, what is done to train, you know, and we looked like deer in the headlights for a bit, there is to be a need to have outside somebody, Gary, that you get a position, that is like a deputy who handles this issue, because technology is automation. And we're all pushing technology, and it's a thing that's happening. The competitive world is so big, but there needs to be somebody, because it's not just Madam C A O, it's C L A, and all in between. It's not just this issue, but there's so many issues that takes, how we do with the human element of people as we transform all this society with technology, with those things right there.
iPad.
iPad, thank you very much. I still use the telephone. Anyway, on the wall. I teach. You got me, Michael. Anyway, but I want to just add to this, too, that you report back on recommendation, Gary, of a position that would be someone to know, because when you asked the question, I said, "Okay, who could answer it?" That's not our business, to know that business. Truly, it's outside, but yet, it should be our business, not to advocate for anyone's side, but to know the realities of it. My uncle was Farmer John, named Charlie Tuna. He came up with the name Charlie. And all that went down in San Pedro, you could feel and smell, but it all changed because of technology, and cannery went someplace else, and what happened there, and how it all goes. So, I think we've got an opportunity here. There was a terrible fumble. We picked up the ball. We were going to legalize the play. We reviewed it, but then we're going to go forward. But I think there's opportunities here with all of us to do things. So, we're going to recommend approval?
We got it.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you very much, and we'll go forward. We do have some public comment cards on other issues. Good morning to you all. This is a matter that's been approved. One public comment card, Noel Weiss.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, that would be approved as amended with all the amendments.
Approved as amendment with the three suggestions.
Yes.
Yeah. Reported 90 days, et cetera, and also that the port develop a position that is knowledgeable of the workforce, that keeps us posted on the changing dynamics. Thank you. Oh, good. Was it 10 o'clock?
10:00.
Okay. Sergeant, what time is it? That clock is not right.
9:50.
Oh, we still got 15 minutes.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Weiss, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
It's okay.
I'm going right there.
General, if the concern of the committee is on being informed on a regular basis, may I suggest, Mr. Chairman and members, that you put on your agenda the risk management program that the port approved in August, that still remains to be reviewed, I think in the context, if you're going to have oversight, rather than after the fact, be proactive. Look at the port's risk management program. They approved it in August. Let's have a discussion about it. Likewise, the port master plan. What kinds of issues should be discussed in the context of what the port has approved? They did this in August. It is now November. There's no reason why this committee and the city council should be taking a scance or, by surprise, on anything, whether it's the port, whether it's the airports, whether it's D W P, regardless. So, my suggestion and my general comment is, the sooner that this committee sets those two matters and agendases them, the better. And I appreciate, again, the committee's consideration of these ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. There's no other calls. This meeting's adjourned. And for the clerks, we thank you to get this right to council.